Okay, can we have a roll call, please? Butcher.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Livia Wright.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
And I'd like to welcome everyone out tonight to our meeting and let's please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, public for which it stands, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye. Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to item 4.0, Consent Agenda. Does anyone have anything they need pulled from the Consent Agenda? Okay, then may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to item 5.0, Board Update. And let's start with David.
I have nothing.
Tammy? John?
Nothing. I hate to be different. I have nothing.
Well, then I have a few things, sorry. The first is that we have heard back from CASB and their Legislative Screening Count Group did not move any of our resolutions forward with recommendation. I asked them to still include them without recommendation so that I can debate from the floor. So they will be up for debate and quite frankly, last time we debated the exact same resolutions and convinced the majority to support them. So I'm hopeful that they'll move forward at that point anyway, but chiefs, I may need your help getting some data ahead of time so that I have my ducks in a row for my three-minute spiel that I get to give to everyone. Then we also have a request. We need someone to serve as an ADA compliance person, which basically is a contact at the board level. And we have two approaches we can take and so we kind of need some opinion on, from all of you on that. One is we could assign it to a role. The other is we could just have someone volunteer this time. And so one thought was we have a CAC representative, Special Education Advisory Council. ADA compliance is frequently related to special education, so does it make sense for us to just automatically assign or designate the board member contact as the person who attends CAC? Or will we prefer to have it be any board member who's at large? So feedback, please.
What would be the responsibility, sir?
My understanding is that if someone feels that their rights were violated, they would, you would be a person in the chain they would call and your responsibility would be to take the phone call and refer them to the stakeholder grievance process, correct?
That is correct. If that is the board's protocol, which it is currently a policy to refer those kinds of things to the stakeholder grievance process, yes.
So but I guess by either statute or regulation, we need a specific contact. So basically, if we decide it should be this person who represents the board as liaison to CAC, that would mean it would be David's responsibility. If there's someone else who would like to step up instead, that's okay, too. The reason I thought of suggesting the CAC piece was then it continues beyond so that every time we do our committee designations, because each of us serve on other committees in the district as board liaisons if statute requires, then that person automatically becomes that. So it might make it easier for them on the policy to designate that board liaison to CAC slash, and then that person's name can get stuck in every time we designate. So what is our consensus, folks?
I like that suggestion.
I second it.
Okay, so we're all okay. David, are you okay with that? Seeing as that will be you?
Yeah, that's good. I'll do it. It's great.
Okay, so is that sufficient direction for you, Peter, and for Dr. Lamond?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I forgot to bring that up at the work session last time because my-
If I need any type of special rules or regulations, okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Dr. Lamond will be awesome at informing you of those. Okay, reminder that we need to fill out our board in chief evaluations for our meeting and return them to Donna tonight. And for us, we each get an informational item to help us in our professional development each month. And this month, it's a chart on the senior leadership and work groups with reporting relationships because as we've just finished a hiring season, some of those things have changed. So we have some new people in different roles and we've also done some job realignments that have changed some of those reporting structures. So that way we have a handy dandy tool to refer to. So with that, we're on to our chief officer update.
The only update I have is I find it kind of very interesting when I was moseying through some of our operations, support operations in the facility side is we're actually getting ready for snow season right now. So just to alert you.
As we're here in September, I had a staff meeting and all staff meeting just this last week and just reminded of how right now we're coming off of our busy time. You know, the summer for the business offices, certainly for the operations office, is is the real busy time to get ready for a new school year. And so because I went around the table and asked everyone what they'd done this summer and they all said work. So I felt like an ogre on one hand, but also reckon, you know, helped me remember that, you know, this is the busy time, season for them getting, getting all the new folks hired and getting them set up for benefits and payroll and things like that. It's, you know, it's a huge task. So we're coming off of that. In a couple of weeks, Jack and I are going to go down to Phoenix and represent and present to the International Association of School Business Officials about our distributed leadership model, our Apex Leadership Process. Peter is busy and can join us with that, but we're going to enjoy our opportunity then to have voice and make that presentation. And it is an international audience, really, that comes to that event. So it's gonna be fun and enjoyable for us to make that presentation.
About a year and a half ago, you approved me volunteering to participate in something CD calls the Accountability Working Group, and we began working through the transition from then TCAP to Park and on to a new accountability structure under the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA. So that group has now transitioned and become the ESSA Accountability Working Group. And with your approval, I would like to continue meeting with that group. That is the meeting that I was at this afternoon, just to see what that transition would look like and what our role would be. There are some very significant, there are some items that are under consideration that are very significant to our district. For example, since we were emphasizing our partnership with the military earlier, this is a which I could advocate for inclusion of military service as being comparable to attending college in terms of evaluating our programs. Right now, if a student finishes our high school and then enrolls or enlists in the military, they actually are counted against our matriculation rate. So with your approval, and it's not something the board would formally take action on, but I would just expect you to to come and stop me if you did not want me to re-up with the Accountability Working Group. I will go forward and Kathleen Jackson will also be joining me from the district as a representative from our special education perspective. So I think it's good for the district. Not many districts have more than one voice. Good for us to have a partnership and to have two voices on their committee. So I will keep you updated in this update as developments proceed there, but my plan is to continue to represent us there.
Okay, and so then we are going to be on to open forum. We do have some folks signed up, so I'm going to read our statement to remind everyone kind of what the ground rules are. "We appreciate and welcome comments on school operations and programs in District 49 as part of tonight's open forum. Please speak into the microphone and state your name before beginning. We ask that your comments be made in a respectful and orderly manner. Personal complaints against any individual connected with the school system are prohibited. Follow-up action items may be assigned to the appropriate chief officer depending on the nature of the comments. In accordance with board policy BEDH, public participation is limited to three minutes per person. Thank you for participating in our open forum. In addition, it is the practice of our board to withhold any board comment or direction to the chiefs until after all who have signed up for open forum have had a chance to speak. I would also like to make you aware of our stakeholder grievance process. This process can be initiated by anyone in our D49 community and guides the community member through the correct people to help resolve their concern, including as a final step, the opportunity to formally appeal to the board. We encourage you to utilize this process as many have successfully resolved their concerns this way." And our first speaker tonight is Ellen Duckers.
I am Ellen Duckers. Been in the district for 28 years, come to board meetings for 28 years. I'm a grandparent now. And it was my grandson who jumped at Vista Ridge High School. I presume most of you know. Focus western his elbow and he's doing okay now. He was in Cedar Springs for three days. And I feel that the district kind of pushed him into jumping because he had, the last week at Skyview Middle School, he got detention for free because he had freedom of speech. And the same thing happened at Vista Ridge High School. After he was reprimanded, he didn't get dismissed from school for a few days. He just had to stay after school. But he still took it as a detention and he just felt false to that his freedom of speech is not there. So he just decided to jump. And when I was at Cedar Springs, I was wondering, there was kids as young as seven in the Cedar Springs, how many kids were pushed into that situation by schools or by other students? And nothing needs to be done. We can't harp on the little kids. Well, he's not so little, he's taller than me now. Where if you don't have freedom of speech, they do have freedom of speech. This is still the United States of America. And when Hillary gets in, it may change, but right now he has freedom of speech and he wants to be a writer. So if he writes at home on his computer, that's his business and his parents' business. None of the schools. And I feel like you're being FBI or KGB snooping around and what the kids are doing at home. And I don't think that's fair. And I remember I said, if anybody harms my kids, I shoot them. I promise I will not shoot anybody. I love you guys, you know that. I just think the rules are not the proper rules.
Our second speaker is Chris Bennett. Oh, okay. Well, we'd like to welcome you all for coming and it's like we have three boy, oh, two Boy Scouts and a leader, correct? So welcome and we hope that you are able to earn your badge as you're sitting here today. That concludes our open forum. And we are on to our action items, Action 7.0. As a general rule, our action items have been discussed at prior meetings at our previous work session. And so we've asked our questions of staff and our questions have been answered. So we tend to move through these fairly quickly because we have had lengthy discussion at our prior meeting. So we're on to item 7.01, Action on Updated Position Job Description. Motion, please.
After previous discussion, I move to approve the updated position job description for the English Language Development Technician.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on item 7.01b, Assistive Technology Assistant Job Description.
I move to approve the revised job description for the Assistant Technology Assistant. Okay. I'm going to start over with my motion. I move to approve the revised job description for the Assistant Technology Technician as recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to item 7.02, Action on Policy Addition. May I have a motion, please?
After discussion at the prior work session, I move to approve the policy and exhibits in item 7.02.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? So currently, we did not have a policy on service animals on district property. And given that that can be something, an accommodation for someone who has different types of disabilities, it's important for us to have a policy and process in place to make sure that we can appropriately accommodate that. So we're addressing that policy need. And with that, may we have a vote, please? Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to item 7.03, Action on Policy Review.
After review and discussion, I move to approve the 25 policies in item 7.03 as recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? These policies are ones we already have in place. For the most part, they're small changes in language or because reporting structures may have changed. So there's some technicality changes in general in these, not anything that really changes how we apply them. And with that, may we have a vote, please? Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. On to item 7.04, Action on Our Bright Project Manager.
I move to approve the Bright Project Manager Job Description.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I just want to congratulate Dr. Fletcher. I don't see him, but congratulations. Great job. Great thing that what you're doing, getting that, just doing the things that liaison to the military, just really great job. Thank you very much.
And this project management position is paid for by a grant that Dr. Fletcher got. So this is not supported by general funds. So this is another amazing way that our staff find of supporting our district by finding other avenues of revenue besides the local tax dollar. And so we really appreciate the hard work you guys did on the grant to get this position. Any further comment? Vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to item 7.05, Action on Pay Schedule Limited Employee Compensation Proposal.
I move to adopt the attached schedule limited supplementary pay as recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I want to thank you, Brett. Great job. Great job with this, with your team to come up with this for for teachers that have shown loyalty to the district. I really appreciate that. I know they do. Just another way that we can show our appreciation for them. So great job.
And this applies to employees throughout the district who have been with us so long that they've reached the top step of our pay scale. So some of them may not have received a pay raise in several years. And so this is giving us a way to take care of that, to recognize that simply because you may have been with us for 25 years doesn't mean that your pay should then stay frozen for the remaining time you choose to serve us. So it gives us a way to do that in a financially responsible way. And so with that, may we have a vote, please? Butcher.
Aye.
Graham. Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to 7.06, The Resolution for Constitution Day.
I move to approve the attached resolution supporting Constitution Day.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Lots of discussion on the Constitution these days, and I think this is important to bring it forth to the children, students, through the teachers in the community that we have. So I'm really glad to see this as an annual thing that we do in the district.
Then may we have a vote, please? Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to item 7.07, The Board Evaluation Process.
After previous discussion, I move to approve policy BAA, Board of Education Evaluation and Professional Development.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Thanks for all your hard work on that, Marie. That's good stuff.
Thank you, Marie. Great job.
Just remember, you all tasked me with it in January, so I did it. And it came from our Performance Excellence Review work, but I'm really proud of all of us together for being willing to take this step and to take the risk. I think it's unique in that we're willing to open it up beyond ourselves and that's kind of a big deal. The other piece of that is, as we vote on this, we need to set a timeline for this year. And so I asked Donna to look and assuming it passes, the three times that we tend to be a little bit lower in things we have to get done are November, January, or August. So suggestions. I have an idea, but-
Don't we have a like a retreat of meeting in January?
We have a retreat usually at the end of January. So one way to do it might be to do the staff surveys and stuff, send that stuff out in December, have the information presented at the January regular meeting. And then we, that would be in time for us to use our retreat to come up with our action plan. So does that sound like a plan? All right, so then let's see if it passes. May I have a vote, please? Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to 7.08, Action on the Intergovernmental Agreement Regarding School Resource Officer Program.
I move to approve the revised intergovernmental agreement between El Paso County Sheriff's Office and Falcon School District 49 for a full-time school resource officer position as proposed by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Is Mr. Watson here? No, he's not here.
David, David's not here, but I spoke with him today. If you have any questions, hopefully I can answer.
No questions, just a thank you because, you know, this, I got, you know, reaching out to different areas of our District 49, the Sheriff's Department, that's, that's, that's what we need to do. So he's, he's doing a good job with that. So just tell him thank you very much.
I had two questions I sent you guys earlier. I just wanted to make sure those answers are on the record because of the way that the contract currently reads. So Donna, if you can make sure this is reflected in our minutes, too, rather than just a comment. The first is that there were currently no dates in the contract. So my understanding and my question was that those dates will be filled in when the El Paso County Sheriff can figure out when they can actually fulfill it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and then the second is that the contract stated a nine-twelfth of the year salary commitment and listed an August payment due for 2016 and then a January payment due for 2017. But we don't have this person yet. So my understanding is that number will be adjusted based on the number of months we actually have an SRO, correct? Okay, so just-
Part of it is when, when the overall, trying to get, you know, the resolution put together and then the agreement put together, but that is correct.
Okay, so I just wanted it to be clear that when we're voting, we're approving it with those two pieces of understanding because we're obviously not going to pay for, we're not going to pay them $67,000, sixty, yeah, $67,000 if we're, you know, two months into the school year and we don't have the person yet. So I thought that was important to have on the record. So with that, can we have a vote, please?
Can I make a comment?
Yep, go on ahead, please.
I also wanted to state that this isn't just for a full-time resource officer within the district. It's for an additional full-time resource officer within the district.
Yes, I believe this one will be assigned to the Patriot Legacy Campus as the predominant one because we now have two high schools located there. So any further comment? Let me, we have a vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. And 8.01 is, the information item is, is our regulations that have been adjusted as a consequence of some of those policies that we just voted in as well. Again, those were predominantly technical changes or shifts of pieces into different places and within policy. 8.02 is student study trips. That's just information for the board. So we're now on to item 9.01, I Connect Zone Performance Report. That's Mr. Franco.
Good evening, Andy Franco, I Connect Zone Leader. I understand there's another, much larger assembly of people in Colorado this evening, and I will try to be brief. I also understand that we've got some excellent folks coming up after me that will be discussing some very similar items to what you're going to see in our zone. So I will be specific to our zone performance and let the experts on the data speak to some of the testing and things like that have come out. In your board packet, I included some charts to give you kind of an overview of where we're at as a zone. Wanted to illustrate the point that in the I Connect Zone, we offer, we have, we have 10 school programs. But when we break that down into elementary, middle, and high school levels, you'll see that there are actually six elementary programs being offered within our zone. Six of those are charter. There are seven middle school programs and then eight high school programs that we're now offering for students. So we definitely are focused on the portfolio of schools rock and offering lots of opportunities for students in in our district, but throughout the zone. I also wanted to illustrate for the board where we're at as far as enrollment is concerned. So these are fairly current numbers. The numbers in the lower left there, you see, are I Connect Zone Charter School students, non-charter school students, and then the total number of District 49 enrollments. So when I say I Connect Zone students, I'm talking about coordinated schools that would include our homeschool program, Patriot High School, Spring Studio of Academic Excellence, and now Pike's Peak Early College. So we're sitting right around 780 students within those programs right now. Our charter school enrollment with the inclusion of Goal Academy, which is right around 4,000 students right now, is a total of 6,900, just over student enrollment. So as you break the pie out, you can see that our non-charter enrollment within the district is actually 64%. And then the charter enrollment, including Goal Academy, there is 36% of the total district enrollment. When you break out the zone enrollment for students, you see that the I Connect Zone, that would be those four coordinated programs, the district-run programs, is about 6% of our total zone population. But when you add back in those charter school students down there at the bottom, the zone grows to 40% of the total zone enrollment in our district. So needless to say, the I Connect Zone is healthy as far as enrollments are concerned, but the portion that we're operating as a district is much smaller in proportion to the charter school enrollment that we see. So, you know, just to kind of illustrate the point that we focus a lot of our attention in the charter area, given the number of students, but we have some very specific needs in our coordinated schools and programs as well that we spend a lot of time focusing on. Next, you'll see a graphic that I shared with you at the end of the year last year, but just to kind of remind you of where we're at with what we are considering to be our early literacy initiative throughout the zone, along with the district initiative. And we're focusing on getting all of our third graders reading by the end of that, their third grade term. And so we're looking at beginning of the year and end of the year change here for students on benchmark according to our DIBELS test, which is a diagnostic reading assessment. And then we're looking at the growth. So in the middle column there for 2015, 16, VOY to ELY, we're looking at how many students or how close or quickly we grew according to the benchmark or the proficiency status. So you can see Banning Lewis Ranch Academy was well above average progress in that category. Pike's Peak School of Expeditionary Learning was well above average. Rocky Mountain Classical Academy was above average. Spring Studio for Academic Excellence, we have a very small N number in that school, meaning that we don't have a lot of student enrollment at that school, but they are working hard to deliver a very face-to-face oriented model in a blended fashion. in a blended fashion. So we are seeing below-average progress there, but I would say that they're really working hard to find a way to make that work in a blended school model. And then Imagine Classical Academy is showing well above average in that area as well. So on the far right, you're seeing the beginning of the year to end of the year progress category for reducing the well-below benchmark students, so students who are not achieving at a proficiency level. We want to close that gap, and so those indicators there show you where we're at with those students. And so we are seeing significantly good results with our students who are receiving interventions at this point. Okay, so CMAS results are in, and I know that we're going to get a good overview of what that looks like across the district tonight, but I'll share with you a little bit about what it looks like in the I Connect Zone. So, you know, it's a little hard to see the colors up on this screen. Hopefully, your screen's a little bit better, and in your packet, you should be able to see that as well. But we're looking at the comparison of students who partially met the expectation on CMAS compared to those who are meeting and exceeding the expectation. And you can see there that we want to see that orange bar compared to the red bar be much higher. So in most of our schools in the I Connect Zone, we are seeing that for fifth-grade science. The exception there, again, is Spring Studio, and we recognize that that's an area that we're going to need to work on. In the eighth-grade science area, we're seeing that we have more students exceeding at Banning Lewis, Pepsil, at RMCA, and we are seeing areas of need to support and grow in that Imagine and that Spring Studio there. All right, and as far as 11th-grade science is concerned, again, we're looking for that orange bar to be higher than the red bar, if you will. And we see that in 11th-grade science, we've got a lot of need there. We've got each of our schools that have more students partially meeting the expectation than we do that are meeting or exceeding the expectation. So that's an area that we will focus on, and certainly as we're developing Unified Improvement Plans this year, these things will be coming up. Social Studies, not all of our schools take the Social Studies CMAS test. They're selected randomly, but Pike's Peak School of Expeditionary Learning, Rocky Mountain Classical Academy, Spring Studio, all participated in the fourth-grade Social Studies test there. And like we saw in other areas, we are looking for this bar to be higher than the one just left of it. And so we are seeing some success there in fourth-grade Social Studies. In seventh grade, it looks like we have some area to improve in our middle school Social Studies testing, so that will be an area that we do focus on in our Unified Improvement planning. All right. And then at the high school levels, we do, of course, participate. Last year, in the ACT, that will, of course, be SAT this year, but giving you a look at where we're at in terms of results for our students at Patriot Learning Center, which is now Patriot High School, Spring Studio for Academic Excellence, and then at Goal Academy as well. So you can see on the far right here that this is the composite score of our students, and this is D-49 on the far right, and then this is the school comparison. So you can see that Patriot High School did not perform quite as well as D-49 in the composite score, and you can see that these areas are areas that we need to improve on as well, considering they're below the district average in each of those. We're aware of that. We're focusing on that, and we're trying to meet that expectation as well. High schoolers at Spring Studio are seeing a little bit more success on the SAT. Reading was quite a bit of a spike for us there, which is great to see. And the composite score was a 19.6, if my eyes are right there, and a little bit over the district average there. So we were impressed to see that with our Spring Studio students, our high schoolers over there. Goal Academy, another alternative education center, much like Patriot Learning Center, is working with students who have that potential of being students that drop out. That's why they're at an AEC. And so we're working with them on seeing those scores go up, but we can see there that our composite score is 15.4, very, actually the same as Patriot Learning Center. So these are areas that we will focus on and work to improve, but we all understand that the populations that we're dealing with there and the students that are working on those things are working really hard. And that's all the data and information I have to share with you. I would like to just brief you with a little bit of time I have left to let you know that at the end of this month at our work session, at your work session, I'll be providing you with the Charter School Annual Performance Report. This year's report will look very different than it did last year in that you'll have an extensive rubric to look at if you choose, to really see where the schools are performing and what their need areas are and what they're exceeding at. You'll have that information in your board packet, but I'll go into depth with that with you at the time. And the end result of that report this year will also give you an indicator of anywhere from noncompliant to distinguished as far as the category that we believe our schools are performing at. And that will help you as a board understand when we come to you and ask you for a recommend, or we give you a recommendation on renewals of our charter schools, where they've been over a period of time. So look forward to that at the end of the month.
Any questions? Thank you, Andy. So our next is the Summer School Performance Report, and that's Mr. Bonavina.
Good evening, everybody. Jim Bonavita, I Connect Zone, I Connect Solutions Manager and Summer School guy. It's a little small, but what you see there is our total enrollments that we had are, when I say total enrollments, that means the total number of courses taken during summer school. And our total number of students was 206. And so you can see that we had a number of students take more than just one course. Actually, we had three or four students take four classes during the summer, and our summer school only ran from January 1 to June 1 to June 27. So they did an awesome job on that, and you can see our success rate. We did charge $100 per student because we had some teachers involved as being mentors and student support coaches to help them out through their programs. So we had 88 students, for one reason or another, did not pay. They weren't required to pay. So, and everything was kind of done in IC this year, which was the first time that we did that. You can see the overall performance. How do I scroll down? There, oh, I don't know if we did that, but thank you. That's awesome. And you can see the English, the orange, well, the orange left indicate the courses that were passed. English 1A as opposed to English 1B is first semester. We had, there's some difficulty there with some students having some problems. English is really, really hard to take in credit recovery because of all the papers that need to be written, and with the Fuel Ed program anyway, and if they're not buckling down and working two or three hours a day on it, then they won't get it done. And then I went through the math, science, and social studies success rates, and you can see that things were done quite well with math, science, and social studies. It's just kind of off the charts for passing, which is really awesome to see. And on our final one graph is our electives, and we didn't have very many students taking those courses, but they did quite well when they did them. And in our seniors, we had, I wrote it down and I don't have it now, we had 29 seniors in credit recovery in June, and those were nine graduates. And as I said before, we had several of them do three and four courses to get their diploma. So, and that was, that's, that was really, that's awesome to see. And we had about, the juniors were our biggest class of about 80, and we had about 29 or 30 freshmen as well. So, and unfortunately, freshmen did the worst in the credit recovery program, but I think that has a little bit to do with maturity. But anyway, so we had a successful summer school. And anybody have any questions?
Yes, the English. It seems like that's been the most difficult. You know, is there something that, have any ideas to where we can do something about that, maybe changing curriculum? I don't know. You know, well, it is what it is. I understand that, but, you know...
And we do have two other learning management services systems going on in the district. What we use is Fuel Ed. It's a K-12 product. But we also, in the district just this year, Edgenuity is being worked on in, at Patriot High School, and also Gradpoint is being used at Spring, at Sand Creek. But we don't really have, we don't have the contract language to be able to use those programs, so we use our, we use the Fuel Ed. As far as how to help the English, I mean, English is historically the hardest course that kids take in high school, one of the hardest. And so, you know, and this is, this is also me working with students all school year long on their credit recovery courses. I think I had 1,700 meetings with students last year during the school year to get them going on their, on their credit journey, but I don't have an answer for you. I wish I did. If I did, I'd be writing a book.
But you, you know, I'm not saying to say you guys didn't do a great job, because you did.
Oh, no.
I'm just looking at the English. It seemed like that's the most...
Yeah. They have to read a novel and they have to write papers. I mean, it's hard. I mean, it's just really difficult. But we did have, we had an HQ English teacher in the library, at the Vista Ridge Library during first summer school to help students with their papers and maneuvering through the curriculum. And we had another, she's a para, but she was, she's the English para. She was at Vista, now she's at Spring Studio. So those two ladies, they, I mean, they rocked as much as they could, beating down the doorways and getting kids in to get them working on their work and looking over their shoulders. But I, you know, I don't really have an answer. I wish I did.
Looks like mostly freshmen, too. So they're also the youngest group in summer school. And the ones who aren't as close to graduation, so the, uh-oh, I might not graduate thing hasn't necessarily hit, so the motivation may be more their parents putting a minute than...
Well, oh, yes. During summer school, there's a very intense person on the end of the phone when they're talking to me about my son is going to go to summer school. But also, it's kind of funny you mention that, because juniors were our highest numbers, and they're thinking ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, they're looking at their friends who are in summer school, the seniors, and saying, "I'm not doing that. I want to be able to walk across the stage."
Exactly.
So they're closer to the...
So there's more, there's more emphasis.
Yeah. They're closer to the consequence. Anybody else have any questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, and so now we're on to our CMAS data, and that's Amber Wetstein and Kathleen Greenwich.
Actually, I am just going to formally introduce Kathleen Greenwich and let you all know how thrilled we are that we were able to take her away from Stetson, unfortunately, where she was doing an amazing job as an assistant principal, but she's already doing great work to support all of our schools now with the implementation of standards and assessments. So just wanted to make it formal, and as you know, Kathleen is filling the shoes of Kristy Rigdon, who was able to advocate for grant funding for the district to support primary literacy after she demonstrated such a great job in supporting that initiative. We were able to, with primarily grant funds, dedicate her to primary literacy. So I will turn it over to Kathleen.
I feel like you want me like a booster thing. No, okay. Good morning and go Broncos. I mean, good evening and go Broncos. So, okay. I wanted to show you this graphic from CDE. You know, initially, we were going to talk about CMAS separately from PARK, but these are all measures of academic success for Colorado. And so you can see here that social studies and science, we traditionally have said CMAS to refer to it, but our PARK tests that Colorado has adopted are part of our CMAS measures. And so the results give us a variety of things, certainly a snapshot of what a student can do, also where that they relate to the standards, our ability to track their growth, for teachers to refine their instruction, and for, you know, it's part of like our big rocks to look at the, for the community to have school and district comparisons and accountability in those areas. So we use multiple measures as educators to measure the students' progress over the school year, and one thing to note is that the new graduation requirements require educators to ensure students demonstrate the mastery of standards. And so these state assessments just give us one more of those data points. So there's been some revision to the performance levels, and it's a lot more straightforward in both ELA in math and science and social studies. The top levels exceeded expectations in the verbiage, met expectations. The really, the only difference is here in the bottom, where in social studies and science, we just have one level to say partially met, and then in PARK, they have it as two levels there. A lot easier to explain. And I wanted to start off talking about the student performance reports. So this is information that parents and teachers receive. It's specific to the student's performance, and these reports will be coming home to our students in the coming weeks now that the embargo is lifted. At the bottom there, there is a link, and there are several throughout that give specific information for educators and parents on these reports. And so I included a sample report, very information-rich for parents, with even also a link for them to understand the reports more, what it means to them, and over those differing levels. I wanted to start firm foundations. You know, that's one of our big rocks, and primary literacy is a huge focus for us. And so this graphic gives you a little bit more information on that. Down here at the bottom is our third-grade ELA CMAS score, and then the lines are from a different test. So we have two main assessments. We use DIBELS and CMAS. DIBELS is a measure that measures the critical skills necessary for beginning reading, including phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. Well, as PARK or CMAS, these measures measure whether students have mastered these fundamentals, but it's through the application of skills with higher-level order skills and critical thinking, problem-solving, and that sort of thing. So down here is where we're indicating the third-grade performance over the past two years, and then we have three years of data on DIBELS. And so here, I just wanted to point out, the firm foundation we're building in the green is third grade. And so as a district, all of District 49 going from, in 2013, 14 school year, 77% ending the year, the last year, most recent year, 87%. So we really feel like that although we're below our goal in third grade, CMAS right now, the DIBELS score show that we're building a foundation for reading mastery. So this graphic just shows a high-level comparison, and in this, we're comparing And in this, we're comparing how we did to ourselves last year and then how we compared to the state. Just that, I'm sorry, that that one right there, the fourth grade, it was actually lower, but only by about three points. So there was an error there, my apologies. A big celebration showing here with fifth grade and middle school ELA. A lot of growth there. I think that's, that's showing some application of the foundational skills and increased performance on that measure. And that's, I would say, from our primary literacy initiative and great work in the middle schools, clearly. And then you can see here in in math how we're doing. Overall, we have strong participation. I feel like, or we feel that through participation, teachers can more effectively use the data to drive their instruction. And then they have data on each student and then the results are more informative to parents and definitely to our community. So the next couple of slides show that, that data that we saw earlier and more specific to each grade level. Then the green bars show, again, we're comparing ourselves to last year. So this would be the fourteen fifteen where they tested in the spring. And then here, the most recent year, and then showing across the grade. So the primary grades here and then the, the bar is the state. And so I'll just go through that. And the more English Language Arts. Like rates down at the bottom. And then math. Did you have a question?
So like when we look at that, if you look at the ELA results for sixth grade, for example, if you look at the twenty fourteen, fifteen sixth graders, that's our twenty fifteen, sixteen, seventh graders. Look at that jump. That's from like thirty-five percent up to forty-five or forty-six percent, right? That's the same kids. So that's a huge gain for that group of kids where the, the child who took it, their class took it in twenty fifteen and only thirty-five percent or so were proficient in sixth grade. By the end, by the time they took the seventh, test in seventh grade, ten percent more of kids were proficient on that test. And that's a, you know, that isn't obvious unless you're following those kids. But if you look, that's pretty consistent across several of these graphs in several grades as I'm looking at it. So that's really encouraging. I think the same thing happened seventh to eighth there, and I thought I saw the same thing happening, yeah, on fourth to fifth for ELA as well. So as much as you can look at it and say, oh, but it doesn't look, got to remember the twenty fifteen, fourteen, fifteen kids in twenty fifteen, sixteen in the same grade aren't the same kids. So looking at how they grow. I mean, that, I just wanted to say kudos on that piece because I don't think it's through how that was graphed, you don't think about that, and that's neat.
Absolutely, thank you for jumping in. And then for math, the results are here for the primary grades and then the secondary grades. I did want to note for, so in the secondary grades, they're no longer taking CMAAS and at tenth grade. So our, the data across the state and our district look a lot different here, as you can see. And so that, that's partly because of that. So I'll talk a little bit about social studies. The state in reduction of testing has reduced the amount of schools that are testing on social studies. So only this represents a third of the school district overall. And so here's the comparison. Definitely, we show a strength overall in social studies, scoring higher than ourselves and the state in most areas. And eleventh graders did take social studies as well, and they're not noted on this part. But in science, the, the areas where like we're shallower, that was only about one, of one point, one percentage point. So except for. And then our participation was also quite strong in social studies and science. And then this is the breakdown of the scores. So relatively consistent. And then I just wanted to share some more further resources for parents. And there's lots of resources for what testing will look like in the future for this year for parents and families. And we'll be sharing these items on our district website for assessment as well. And so our goal is really to create a culture of usefulness and utility around assessment. Thank you for your time tonight.
Anybody else have questions or anything? Well, on the, I had one on one other slide, the Firm Foundation slide. Because our DIBELS data is pretty awesome by the end of the year. Eighty-seven percent is pretty great. But they take CMAAS in like February or something, right? February, March for ELA?
Yeah, and yeah, they can take some of it, yeah, in March before we go on break, so.
Because if I remember from the data last year, I thought some of our schools had their most significant growth second semester in ELA. And if they're testing the kids like basically a third of the way through that second semester, some of that realized growth wouldn't show up on CMAAS because of when the kids took the test. So the other part may be that the test is also testing higher order things, I think. So it might be a combination, but because I remember, I remember the misery piece of my kids during that time of year. And but our data was flu, like there were several schools where it seemed like they took off second semester.
You know, and I think that the, the work we're doing is the right work to build that foundation for students so that we'll see, we'll see growth here as well as we're seeing growth here. And that just takes time.
Okay, that was my only other thing, anybody else?
Another thing, as Kathleen pointed out earlier, is we're starting to see some of the fruit of our labor with the fourth and fifth grade classes. So even though our third graders aren't performing yet, where we know they will eventually, the, the longer that they stay with us and the longer that we keep our focus on building that firm foundation, we believe will impact continuous improvement on the standards as well.
So if no one has any other questions, we're on to Ron with her enrollment update.
Good evening, Board. Ron Sprems, Finance Group Manager here with the enrollment update. The information that I gave you in your back, just the, just an update with another week or actually another two weeks of data, you can see really relatively unchanged as you go out through the zones. Power zone, ICNX zone, everyone's pretty flat. If you come up to the summary page, this kind of shows where everyone is. Student wise versus budget, dollar wise versus budget. And I put a little blurb down in the bottom of, I don't know if you can zoom into that. Down all the way. And I just put some information from last year saying that if we, you know, if we trend similar to what we, what happened last year, we'll get a little bump after Labor Day weekend. And we'll kind of slowly work down as we get to the October count. Last year, October count was down eleven students to where we were at last week of August. I did a count at the beginning of this week, so after Labor Day, and we did have a bump of about ten kiddos. And hopefully we'll see that again coming up after this week. But I will, if, again, if we trend similar to last year, we'll kind of see ratchet down a few from there. So as I started thinking about, and I apologize, I do not have this in the packet, I can get, I have the information for you. But I was thinking about the question I'm sure everyone was thinking about last time I gave this, and David Moore said, why? And that's, that's a really good question. And, you know, it's hard to understand what some of these families are, are thinking about as they go to other districts or out of state or whatever. So anyways, I found some information that, that we do have. I guess when the, the registrars at each school are taking information, when they're just enrolling, they do have a reason code of why they're leaving. And so it's, it's not the exact kind of data we're looking for, but it does give us some, something to look at. And the graph I'm showing or the information I have is based on students that were here on July first, who then subsequently disenrolled. So as of today, okay? That number is one thousand seven hundred and forty-seven students out of about fourteen thousand that we had enrolled at the time, which is roughly about twelve point four percent. I looked, well, before I say this, the, the biggest area where we're seeing that is moving to a different district within the state. Now, I don't have if it's a different district within the Colorado Springs area or if this is, you know, up in Denver or moving down to Pablo. But it's within a disparate district in, and and roughly a little over, a little over half of those kids are doing that. The, the other biggest category was kiddos moving out of state or out of country. And that's about thirty-six percent. And then there's a litany of other different reasons, but they're pretty small. So anyways, I did some more digging into that data to see where is it? And there is no one school, one zone. It's all fairly equal among all of them. Elementary, middle, high school, it all is pretty even to where those, as they leave. There's, like I said, no specific area. So as I leave, I will hand out this information. It does give you a little readout and I will make sure this gets into the next board packet. So everyone can see that. So what, what do we do going forward? Or with this information, with the budget information, we have a big payroll coming up. Our September payroll is one of our, one of the toughest for our payroll departments when all our new employees are coming in. And we got to make, working with HR, making sure everything's getting updated properly. And this is where I'll get my first, once that, once that first payroll gets posted, I'll get a good idea how close my staffing models were as to what we're actually seeing as far as payroll. So that's the next step. I'll, I'll go through all the staffing personnel models. Once I have that information, I'll work with the, with the zone leaders to determine where to go from there. Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, has this been a significant increase in student population in like D twenty, D eleven around us?
I, I do not have that data.
I'm just wondering that, so you know, I mean, if they're leaving here, they're going around the state, that's one thing. If they're leaving here, going to another district that's close to us, you know, that's information that may be helpful.
So after, I know this is kind of a long time, and we're a little impatient right now. But after the October count gets finalized, which is in the November, December, maybe January timeframe, we do get a report of, I believe it's the students that were not in our district that are attending others and vice versa. And then Melissa compiles a really nice report that has some really detailed data on where those kiddos are going. So.
Right, because that code you're getting now could mean their parents sold their home and bought a new home somewhere else.
Absolutely.
Which is very different than choicing out. I know home sales have spiked considerably as people's home values are going up. And I remember a long time ago, like, I don't know, five or six years ago, and we were, had to be five, right? About four or five, when we talked about Evans at one point. In some areas of our district, when the economy gets tight, families start doubling and tripling up. And so you have multiple families live in a home. And then as the economy improves and people can afford to rent a place or buy a place on their own, those families start no longer occupying the same home. And we see some significant student shifts when that happens in some of the southern schools. And I just thought of that just because Evans is forty students under what their estimate was. And that part of our district tends to be most heavily influenced by that, that area. And I think the area around Odyssey. So there are some financial dynamics that might not have to do with choice in, choice out, that may have to do with economic recovery and what people are able to do for home choices. And then that the housing market is shooting back up again, which is always a blessing and a curse for us.
Any other questions?
What about military? Because just as our servicemen, we're talking about, these tend to be transient.
Yeah, I, I would say of the thirty-six percent I'm showing that are out of state and out of country, I would say not all, but a high percentage of those are, are military, yeah.
And may I, may I make an observation related to that? Even though those numbers are related to a July one to September eight timeframe, it's possible that those students stayed through the end of the school year, moved to another state, maybe moved to another district.
Absolutely.
But didn't inform us about that until later in the summer, when they're getting ready to go to another school and they have to do a records request. So that's why you see, it's not literally that all those students left over a six or eight week period. It is that's when we learned about it. Some of that leaving happens in that timeframe, but some of it is earlier departures and we are notified about it until the summer.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions? Okay, Brett, did you need to add something or are you just there in case?
Yeah, I guess I would just, you know, say something similar to Peter. I mean, I don't consider this, this, this enrollment information to be unusual. I mean, it's, it's, it's a piece of data at this point right now, so we need additional context to really understand whether it's unusual. Because we really have replaced all those students when we see that our enrollment is, is consistent with last year, too. So it's not like we are eroding. It just, I think, is reflective of the natural annual churn that we have. And so as we get more information, I think we'll get better, better context around that. Also, we'll get some, some anecdotal, I think, feedback on some of, some of the surrounding districts, you know, when we, we visit with other, other area finance staff members, you know, throughout the course of the month, and we'll, we'll get some of that as kind of a general feel for what's happening out there, too.
All right, thank you. So now we're on to our election education and then information update. It should be Matt and Brett, thank you.
And so with our last meeting, our special meeting, when we approved ballot language, we are in a different phase of our election initiative here where we are in our, in a pure informational phase from, from an official district perspective. But we do, in terms of providing information, I wanted you to know that, that we do know that there is a campaign committee that's been established in support of the, of the initiative. We're not aware of any organized opposition yet to this point. When we, when, and if we hear that, we'll, we'll let you know that as well. But so the, the campaign or the committee to, in support has, has a website with, with some, some, some nice graphics and, and information on there about that. From our perspective, the next, the next major step is for us to be working on what they call the Tabor Notice. That's something that basically ends up informing the, the blue book that comes out for voters when, when the ballots get close to coming. So preparing the Tabor Notice is an exercise that Donna and I in particular work on. And that's, again, just in terms of gathering information that is relevant for voters to have representation. So it includes not only some numbers that I'll provide, it also includes some, some statements for and some statements against the proposal. And so we'll gather that information as, as, again, as we receive that and, and make that submission right around. I think it's the twenty-second, twenty-third of the month. And so hopefully we'll have, be able to have that to show you at the work session at the end of the month.
Any questions?
So you're going to use David to help as part of the language for the, for the blue book Tabor?
Yeah, we are, we, we, we met earlier this week. It was, it was, you know, underwriting and counsel that worked with us on those type projects.
Any further questions? I think the website looks nice to some of the committee members and community volunteers I see sitting out there. Nice job. And so then with that, let's move on to our performance excellence discussion with Peter.
And so then with that, let's move on to our performance excellence discussion with Peter.
So as, as you are all aware from your personal involvement and your oversight, we are actively committed to continuous improvement. We want to be an excellent district. We use the metaphor of Pike's Peak to describe peak performance as being in the top 10%. So if we're measuring something good, we want to hit that good mark 90% of the time. If we compare ourselves to other districts, we want to be above the 90% threshold. That's what an A looks like. It's the top 10%. It makes the shape of a peak. And so that's just a way of reminding ourselves what we think District 49 can and should aspire to be. And so the calendar for us for performance excellence involves our participation with Rocky Mountain Performance Excellence, which is a multi-state regional affiliate of the National Baldridge Excellence Program. And so annually, at the end of August or the beginning of September, we submit a, an extensive self-study. We go through all of the aspects of district's operations. We submit that as an application for Rocky Mountain Performance Excellence. I'll probably call them REMPEX to abbreviate it. We submit it for their consideration and they read through our application. And then they assemble a team of people who really read through our application and then come do a site visit with us. And so they will come and do a site visit with us, I believe, the second week in November. It's a little ways out. But the reason that, that cycle of, that cycle of review is important is because it, it is informing your cycle of strategic planning. So when you come to the annual planning retreat at the end of January, you will have in hand our second site review feedback report, which is why I didn't need to chime in earlier, because I knew I would have this opportunity. Your intent to gather information from the community about board performance matches up really well with where we do our annual review and our annual kind of resetting our course toward performance excellence. So I can scroll through as fast as you want me to, or you can jump to page 285 in the packet. Because I want to, I want to remind us all what we said, 285 is going to be vision mission values. Nope. There you go. 279 is the page I needed to start with. I apologize. So last January, based on our previous site view feedback report. If you remember Mr. Steve, the team lead stood up and he said, you got a lot going on here. Maybe my packet was, was differently numbered. I may have, I may have been looking at the previous packet and I apologize if so. So here we are and that'll work. I can speak to that. That, that works. What they meant by you got a lot going on is because a year ago, we, we still had some artifacts of some older vision emission and strategic planning from the Flippin Group. We had a BHAG, we had five by five. We had a, a long, rather wordy mission statement. We didn't have a vision statement. And so one of the things the board charged us to do and that you led us through was a simplified vision and mission that people knew and understood. And so that became that our vision as District 49 is the best choice. That's our vision. So that every time somebody has a choice to work, a choice of where to learn, a choice of where they want to be a leader, that they would choose District 49. That's our vision, the best choice. And our mission to accomplish our vision is that we want everyone, every day to learn, work and lead. So as part of our, our cycle of learning as an organization, we simplified our vision and mission. And then we work really hard to, to try to deploy that out to our entire community and workforce. And we did that through our base camp event and our sent to excellence over the summer and through just increasing presence of this visit, vision and mission. And increasing focus on that vision and mission. We've also emphasized our cultural compass and what that means for the, the way we treat each other and the way we treat our work. So that was one of the things that we learned from our last site visit report. And we can show that team, when they come back now a year later, we learned from what they told us. We're implementing it, not at all done, but we're moving in the direction of implementation. The second thing that the board emphasized last January, and now I don't know what page I'm going to go to. It used to be 285. But this is keep on coming down about eight more pages. There you go. Strategic planning process. So a second thing that our site visit review team told us was you all could get better at being strategic planners. And so our strategic planning process that you see on screen there was really in its year zero last year. But what happened was the board in January indicated by the, the box at one o'clock. The board said, these are the priorities. We want you to work on a simplified vision and mission. We want you to work on better strategic planning, setting performance measures, setting goals and projections and targets. And we've been doing that very diligently. That's part of why the report that we submitted this year has a lot more results data in it. It actually has quite a bit more visual data, charts and graphs, and more textual data. I don't know how we were able to do that because it is still only 50 pages long. But we're actually able to report more positive activity in terms of our strategic plans, accomplishing our goals, hitting our targets. And so one of the examples of that that I want to show you is in 7.1. It's the, it's the very first graphs in 7.1. These are our primary literacy graphs measuring using DIBELS. And so we've, we've gotten better at explaining how we measure our strategic initiatives, primary literacy in this case. And so on the left-hand side, you see what Kathleen presented earlier, but you've seen in kind of a simplified version for a site visit team that doesn't have the depth that you all have or we have. We want to see the numbers of students below benchmark going down. And we want to see the amount of the going down time, because that means we're moving more students above benchmark. So the left side is students below benchmark going down. That's a negative number. So we want to reduce it. The right side is the students above benchmark going up. And the length of the bar between the beginning of the year and the end of the year gets bigger every year. So not only are our students going up, but the rate at which they're going up is getting better. Well, this is measurement of a strategic priority. We just weren't doing this as clearly a year ago. So this is a second place where your direction to leadership and our collaboration is getting us to be responsive to the site visit team that we saw a year ago. And the final thing the site visit team said to us is y'all aren't so great at results. So let's go to page 50, the last page with the window of, of precise performance. The business office did something really fantastic right at the end of our reviewing cycle last year. And I give a lot of credit to Brett, but I know he reflects it to his team because they generate the numbers that produce this report. In school finance, more is not always better. It's not always more better to spend more money. It's not always better to have increased revenue. Some of our programs like nutrition services have to meet a particular threshold. We can't make a profit off of our students. Okay? So what Brett and his team have done is they've created this, this kind of coral or peach colored band in the middle, this window of precise performance. And then we can see, if we look from left to right, we can see more and more of our key indicators for the business office are in that window to the point where this year we have four of our indicators in the window and one is a miss in a good direction. So some misses are not good, but a miss on, on being efficient on costs, on not spending as much as we had projected. That's a good miss. A miss on revenue in either direction is, is not as desirable as being in the window. So this is the kind of data that our site reviews team specifically asks, asked us for a year ago. And then if you will scroll up to our page of 12 graphs, Matt and I sort of lived with this report for a few days. And so we had to develop a new way of representing some of our data so that we could efficiently get a lot of results data. And that's probably how we got more graphs and more words into the document. But this is what they asked us for a year ago, and we didn't really know what we were doing or how to represent it or provide it. But there's a single page right there where you can see our green line. And I'm not going to go through these 12 graphs, but you can see that our green line goes where the arrow says it should go. If up is better, our lines are trending up and projecting up. That's not universally true. So it's a fair, good faith report where we're not doing so well, we say so. But we're doing a lot better about identifying which results matter. First, representing them to ourselves and then being able to share them with an external team. And it will take us more cycles of improvement before everyone in our community, all of our workforce, all of our leadership, before we all speak performance excellence fluently. But we're getting there. And the way we are getting there is by, is by not trying to fix everything or improve everything. By being focused on the three areas that you asked us to focus on, we were able to deliver a really strong self-assessment. And now we will wait for the site team. We'll have a great learning experience with them. We'll bring it all back in January and start another cycle of learning. That was 10 minutes. That was 50 pages, Mr. Meister, as well. I especially want to, want to thank Matt and Amber and Catherine Hotchavar, who were instrumental in delivering a much, just a huge amount of work over the last month to get this report in shape, to get it delivered. They did a great job. And there are many people in the room that contributed and supported that. But they were definitely, they were in the, the middle of the, the shell. They were doing the hard rowing through August. And so appreciate that very much. Are there any questions? There's lots there that you could probe, about 50 pages of dense text.
Well, I'm glad that the, the trend is supposed to go down, is going down. The trend is supposed to go up, is going up. I like that the, the difference between them from end of year and beginning of year is widening. You know what I mean? So that's a great job. That's a testament to all of you guys and your teachers and administrators that you guys are really working hard, really doing a good job. So thank you guys very much. You know, the numbers don't lie. Numbers don't lie. So.
So I know we have this in our board packet, but do we have it anywhere as a separate link on our website for community members to access? So, because I think that would kind of be, it'd be great as we're doing this to have like a, a tab or something where you can say, here's last year's report, here's this year's report. And then when we get our feedback reports, we can put those right with them so that our community can see how we're changing. And then of course, as we do our planning, you know, the board pieces will be public as well. So we can say, here's where the board part's changing. But kind of creating a performance excellence for the community information, I think would be kind of cool personally. I know I can't create work for anybody by myself, but I think that might be an interesting, something our community would be interested in and maybe not having to dig through our board packet to find it would be nice. I see some community members nodding. Just food for thought.
Thank you. Good team. Good effort.
So with that, we are on to other business. Anyone have anything to bring up?
Had the scouts like the meeting. Guys staying awake? Okay, most.
Hey man, this was a short one too. You picked a good one to come to. Okay. So if there's no other business, then may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please.
Butcher?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Of course.
Motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:54.